Call the meeting goer at 6:05. Now we look for somebody that wants to be Chair, right? Is that first, or you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Our first order of business is reorganization, and I am requesting nominations for Chair.
Want to be Chair?
Sure.
Okay. I nominate Katie to be Chair.
All right, wait a minute.
I second that.
Okay, wait a minute. And that was Bob and Maureen. Is it Maureen?
Yes.
Great. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Katie, you are now Chair.
I'm here, I get to run.
And now we need to take Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, do we have a nominee? Can I get a nomination for Vice Chair?
What does a Vice Chair do?
Vice Chair, oh, is that right?
Second in command. Should the Chair not be here?
Yeah, exactly.
Then the Vice Chair would run the meeting.
And I'll nominate myself for Vice Chair, I guess. If you can nominate yourself.
Yeah, I can nominate. I nominate Bob.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't do Secretary.
We don't really do a Secretary usually, but...
Because you're the Secretary, right?
Yeah.
But in case, you know, I get one of them.
I nominate Maureen to be our villain Secretary when Lynn's not here.
I will second that. All in favor? And then we need a Frontier representative. So this is one of our board members that goes to the Frontier of school committee meetings. So Bob has traditionally been there. Would you like to continue?
Sure.
Yes. So I'll nominate Bob.
May I second?
All in favor?
Thanks.
Do we need to vote on the Union 38 representatives? Or is just, welcome Maureen?
Yes.
Who was voted as our representative, right? Or do you have to...
Is it just school committee members? Or is it something else?
What that means is, for instance, next month and in April, we will have a joint school committee meeting. So you will be at that meeting with 24 other school committee members, and you'll be representing the Union.
Yep.
Yeah, well, everybody will have a big meeting first, and then it breaks off to the little meetings that you've seen before. Frontier do their business, try to do their business first, and then it goes off to the four other towns. And Lynn and Patty try to jump between the four of them and do their business with us and stuff, so...
Okay. So do we nominate and vote ourselves to be the representative? Is that so?
No. We just fill in Maureen in the vacant spot.
Okay. So then there's three other kind of committee jobs.
I think you just...
I've been the Collaborative.
I think you just, what's the proper word?
Do I appoint someone to these?
You disappoint people that would like to...
To take these on.
Exactly.
So I've been the Collaborative representative. I don't Maureen, if you might be interested. It's a good way to learn more about the other school districts. And it's a month, a meeting like once every quarter, maybe? I'm happy to continue, but I also will offer up as a way to... Unless Bob has something he would like to do.
No. I'll help you with the other ones.
Do you want to do, yeah?
I'll stay with the...
You were the policy person before?
Yep, I'll stay with the policy person.
Okay. And I'm happy to do the capital planning.
Yep. That'd be great.
So I'm the Collaborative.
So you would be the Collaborative. Maureen?
And that's like, that's every...
I think it's like every three months or something. They have a meeting.
They have a dinner, too.
Yeah, you get dinner, which is nice. But you meet a lot of other school committee members, and you would be sort of a board member of the Collaborative by taking on this role. So I can help you learn more about that.
It's in Northampton. It's the Collaborative Educational Services. And they provide a lot of support to what we do in our different districts. And they support Hampshire, Franklin County educators. And they offer a lot of support, professional development. We actually are working with a Title III grant through them. We don't have enough ELL, English Language Learner students in our district to get that money, but we do have a number. We don't have 100, but we have quite a few. So we join in through the Collaborative with many other districts that have small numbers. Orange, Pioneer, different other members of the Collaborative. And so we get, it's probably a $60,000 grant, and we get a piece of that because we're joined in this consortium of school districts. It's really interesting.
I think it's really good. You know, we pay a very small dues every year to this as a school, and it really does help us with different programs and gives us a lot of help and stuff, so...
Resources, yeah. Sounds good. Okay, so I think we've set...
We don't have any negotiations coming up in the next couple of years, do we?
Next year, but not now.
Oh, sure, okay.
But policies, oh my.
Yeah.
They just finished redoing all the policies in 2016. And then, over the course of last year, actually, there's many others that are coming down the road that need to be changed. We have quite a few that need to be changed. Some are just simple words where the old language was handicap. We now use the term disabled. So those we'll just change. But then there's others that we really need to look at, what the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is recommending. They've already written a template and changed the pieces that need to be changed to keep up with the law. We're going to study it in Policy Committee and decide if, as a school committee, do we change it, too, for us? So there's a few. There's a few. You know, there's no great rush, but we do need to start working on that. And so that's great. I'm needing to ask every school committee to be a part of it. We have four, one for each town.
I was on the last Policy Committee Representative from Waitley, and it was, let me tell you. When we started with the book, it started with Policy Book here. It went down to here, but these other ones went over to...
Procedures.
Procedures. And we went through some sections. Some sections were, we could knock out a couple in an evening or a morning, but some of them were...
So we have about this many now that have to be redone. But it, most of them are very slight. It's just that, you know, Boston keeps changing, you know, adding and doing their, you know, business of making laws. And we need to follow suit as a district.
And there's a digital version of it, too, now.
Yes, on our website.
Makes things a whole lot easier.
So when we make the changes, we, when we agree as a Policy Committee, we bring it to the school committee. And once we all agree, then we send it to them, and they'll update it on our website. But right now, we're working under the school committee policies that...
We used to get a book. New members get a book. As you left, then you turned it in. And I never know whatever happened to mine, but you got a book. That was huge.
Not killing as many trees.
That's true. Not many trees. Everything's digital, so...
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to suggest earlier this week the issue of school committee representatives to the sick bank committee came up. And I know the last couple of times that there was a request for sick bank time, which we can explain in a moment, that we called you. And it does say in the contract that you have the opportunity to appoint somebody. But technically, the sick bank committee is two members of school committee and then two members of the Union. And I don't know that, because it happens so infrequently that I don't think you've ever designated two members of the school committee. But technically, there should be two of you, and you can designate that rule so that if a request comes up...
Did you guys get an email this week by chance?
I don't think so.
So we didn't forward it, so if you wanted to...
So I can talk about it just in general.
Yeah, just in general, yeah.
But the way sick bank, the way the Union contract works, and thankfully, we have the Union President here in case I don't get it right. But there is language in the Union contract that indicates that if a member of the Union has used up all of their sick time, that they can make application to the sick bank time. So if somebody has a chronic illness and they've used their sick time, Union members can donate some of their unused sick time to that person. That process, initiating that process requires approval from a committee of four, if I understand it correctly. Two members of the Union and two members of school committee, who simply say, yes, proceed. Essentially, is what it amounts to. They, you know, you get told a little bit about the situation, and then you approve that this person, any person, can go to sick bank committee. And the last couple of times it came up, it hadn't been designated. So Bob said, I'm in favor of it. And Pete, I'm going to designate you to be the other person. And I said, well, I'm in favor of it. And the Union said, okay, let's go ahead and allow this person to request sick bank time. But technically, it should be two members of school committee.
So do they just meet when it's needed? When someone doesn't need it?
Yeah. It doesn't even require a meeting, usually. It can just be a phone call or an email saying such and such a person is...
I only remember two times in the last...
Yeah, it doesn't come up.
And it's been, you know, and Pete emailed me on Thursday or Friday asking me about it. And I sent back that, have you guys hear about it? And I said, it's fine with me to appoint Pete as a representative to get the ball moving for the individual.
And that's already happened. So that's good. In this case, it's already done. But again, because the language says it should be school committee members...
So you wouldn't be a valid member, then? Is what you're saying?
You are allowed to designate somebody. But again, the language in the contract says that two school committee members are part of the sick bank committee.
So you can disappoint two people, but if Maureen and I are there and Pete sends both of us an email and we're not available to go to the meeting, Pete can be a representative as the two people.
If you need one. But usually, it's just a matter of saying, you know, giving approval that, you know, you can initiate the process. Does that sound right to you, Jen?
In this case, this week, I told Pete I had no problem, like I didn't have the last time when this happened. And I was more happy to let him be our designee.
It's a wonderful thing where peers can help out their peers in need. We do have FMLA, but that's, after your sick time is used up, it's unpaid. Your job is safe. It will be there when you come back. But after you use your sick time... So when your peers can offer you their sick, one of their sick days, and you don't end up losing income, it's a wonderful thing to do. And it's, I've never seen it taken advantage of. And, but I think that's what the, you know, the CVA says, that you meet and discuss it. But it's, I've always wanted, Jen.
I think it's a great idea.
So these are teachers donating across the different schools? It's not just we, or is it within each school?
I think it's just...
Each school.
So it's within each school?
Yeah. Each school has its own sort of sick bank.
I see.
Yeah.
So you can appoint two people if you want.
Yeah.
Whatever you want to do.
I don't know. Just make it the Chair and the Vice Chair that are the members for the tolling.
That'd be great.
And that way, we always know who it is. And Maureen can be the backup if we need someone else.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Glad to help Pete.
Thank you.
So we have the minutes to approve. Is that, are we done with the reorganization? The Minister, Maureen have emailed a question, which I'm thinking Patty is the right one to answer, about the sort of breakdown of all this money. So should we just defer the voting of the minutes until then? Or should we vote sort of the minutes barring any clarification of that?
My advice would be, these notes reflect what we talked about at the committee, at the meeting last time. And publicly, we agreed to this. Whatever the numbers are and whatever, if you email Patty, always make sure to email everyone so that...
I did.
Yeah, okay. And then we're all...
She can answer it for everybody.
Yeah. And Patty will answer that. It's a question of $3,000. Was it spent or not spent? My, and what I said to Maureen is, it looks like it could be just an addition error, but I don't know if we have actually paid that $3,000 yet because it's for the first year's use. We haven't used it all the way yet. And my other, my other comment on that is, when we make plans for the summer work, they're estimates. So we estimated this and this, these jobs will cost a certain amount. And when the bills come, sometimes they're less. Sometimes one might be more, one might be less. But we do have a finite number of dollars to be used at the end of the year. And Patty will be able to speak to that and much better.
I mean, there's a couple of things that we could do. It has a lot to do with the questions here. We can put the minutes off till next meeting to approve.
Or next time.
Or approve them. I mean, especially if there's going to be some amended things to it. So we can put the minutes on hold until Patty comes back, get the answers done. After we have to change something in the minutes, we get them changed.
Right.
But we can also...
Yeah, go ahead.
Or we can just approve them. But if there's, if there're going to be some changes, I rather, I personally rather wait to approve the minutes until we have, make sure the minutes are right.
Right. Or I was wondering if we approve them sort of as written because these are the numbers, as Lynn was saying, that were discussed. But then, we could ask Patty to update us on what were the real numbers?
Yeah.
And then we can have that in our sort of next minutes to reflect the reality. Because I do agree that these were sort of estimates at the time, and we're not really sure exactly where they ended up.
So the minutes are accurate, but the numbers may have changed. And I can give you an example of one that I know about that did. And I'll get to that.
Right. So I'd rather not worry too much about the numbers at the time, but focus more on what was really spent. Does that make sense?
So Maureen, you weren't on the committee at the time.
No, I wasn't. You can't actually vote for these minutes, anyway.
I was wondering about that, too.
Yes.
But you could, like...
But you can ask questions.
To your email or the next meeting, you can ask Patty or ask her through an email.
Yeah.
Because you're on the board now and stuff. So we, you and I, what is staying, we can vote for the minutes as read. Right?
Mm-hmm. So do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 5.
I'll second. All in favor?
2:01.
01. Thank you.
And then we'll be sure to follow up with Patty on the...
And I'll write as read. And that question will be answered. Did you want me to re-sign with a blue pen?
If it was something really, really, really important, I...
I guess if it was going to the state. I guess to the town of Waitley, it's okay. The state, we like blue.
Okay. So financial statement. Patty sent us statements via email.
Yep.
I don't know if there's anything to discuss without her here on that. I noticed she only sent the one fund for the full year. She didn't send like the School Choice Fund or the other funds. So I was going to ask her to resend those to everybody so that we'd get kind of the full picture.
I can put that in the notes.
Okay. She did send all the funds for the first month, two months, or whatever it's been so far.
And then the year end?
Yeah, so the year end.
I'm positive the year has been closed out.
I would think that she would have. I think she just probably forgot something in the report.
Lynn, you can have these back, too.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything to comment on in the year end from your perspective?
Typically, typically, we get a printout. Oh, but Patty's not here tonight, so we don't get a printout.
She emailed it to us. Did you get that?
No, I didn't. I probably...
You talking about these spreadsheets?
Yeah.
There's one that is year-ending June 2017. And then there's another one just for the month of, from June to the end of August.
So again, this is where we would see the extra money at the end of the year, potentially. Although, there's also an accounting entry to get rid of the surplus. So it's a little tricky to read.
Funds are encumbered in that one. Funds are encumbered in there to cover these estimates.
The final estimates on those. So they kind of take any money left over at the end of the year and put it aside for people to use. One thing I was going to suggest, working with Patty on it, is trying to come up with more of a summary report because it's very hard to read that report as a sort of more casual user of it. And so it might make sense for us to have kind of a one-page that we can really reference more easily.
I think Patty at Frontier helped us where, if there was a particular overage on a particular line item, she would keep this on another separate piece of paper for us at Frontier. So we would know that, yeah, we already discussed this one and this one, what this one. So if something else came up new, she would add it to a list to show us what's been going on, why it's an overage. Somebody out sick, or the bus schedule. We need an extra bus. But that's how, that's how she did it at Frontier because we would have a lot of overages.
And then a lot of underages.
Yeah, exactly.
That would balance each other out. So, yeah, I sort of would rather not get into all the detail myself. I'd rather just know overall how they're doing. I think that that's sort of Pete's job and Patty's job to manage that.
So Katie, I heard you say if there's some, and I do think Patty's the best person to summarize it. But if you look at that second or third paragraph of the minutes from the last meeting, I can tell you that all of the things that she mentioned that money would be used for, nothing got cut out. And in fact, some things were added. Because as she did more of the math, you know, our meeting was on June 5. And as it says here, you know, a projected amount less the estimated bills, leaving approximately this. And I think that as the month went on, you know, the numbers showed that we could spend a little more money.
That you had more money left.
And when you hear my list, I'll point out to you one of the things that I know we added. But again, for specifics, I think you're absolutely right to wait for Patty.
Yeah, she's the one.
But in general, that paragraph there, everything that was included in there is being pursued or has been pursued.
Right. Because like based on this one reported, there's still 30,000. Yeah, 30,000 that's kind of left in the fund, if you will.
Oh, I don't think it would be that much.
But she's probably moved that somewhere else by now.
Or we haven't got the bill for it yet. Or the invoice. Right, is that it?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's all, I'm sure she made sure that we spent the money. I mean, little is left. Sometimes, I think it's returned to the town. But again, I can't speak to that. But I can tell you what projects we did do that we discussed while we get there.
Yeah. But I want to be mindful of kind of where we end up because if we're asking for more budget and then we end up with money left over, that's not necessarily a good thing. But it's good if we can spend it on important projects.
I walked around, took a few of them.
Good.
Yeah, very nice.
Okay, so we need to sign the warrants. But just like you guys over that, so that's right. Public comment? Is anyone here for public comment? No? Okay, so we'll move on. Unfinished business. So there's a discussion item about student transportation.
So last June, when we looked at the notes, we talked about the Student Transportation Policy, EEA. And what we wanted to do, what we wanted to do was to be more true to our practice as opposed to what was here. And we talked about grades. K-3 students will not be released from the vehicle, meaning the school bus, unless a parent, guardian, or designated caregiver is present. So the bus driver needs to see, if it is a child under the age of eight years old, needs to see, or under the age of third grade. Students up until second grade. We never know the age. But needs to see an adult to take care of that child.
Up until third grade.
Until they're in third grade. At that point, they get to go off and get into the house, and the parents don't come to the door. We'll come out to the bus stop. What we have been doing, though, some parents have been asking us or saying, listen, Suzie's in fifth grade now. She could just walk Mary home with her. It's fine. We live, you know, right there. I can see it from the house. I don't need to come out. But it wasn't specifically articulated in the policy. So now we're asking, we asked the school committee in June to allow us to add that in, the words, "or sibling in grade four or higher with parent or guardian approval." So if a person, a parent, has a student in grade four, not three, but four, five or six, says, can we send the child home? You know, just send him to walk up the hill with his sister. It's fine. If the parent approves, we're asking that the school policy be amended to say that. And so we need a vote on it.
So moved.
Oh, I was wondering.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I guess maybe this will clarify if I'm the one who's confused. But the minutes from the last meeting indicate that we've already had this vote and approved it.
We talked about it in June, I remember.
I thought we voted on it. And approved it. If we did.
No, I don't know. Did they say that?
It was in the minutes. I couldn't see that with Pete. That's why I was a little confused.
Yeah, the minutes say that under new business, this is from the last meeting, there was discussion on amendment to Policy EEA, student transportation, grades K-3 students, you know.
On the day behind.
I think you've already done it.
Yes.
But I thought, I thought we...
I know that sometimes you said you wanted to think about it.
We think about it till the next meeting. We think about it till the next meeting.
But I think we didn't think, I remember it wasn't really anything we thought was...
Maybe we decided not to think about it, because it was, it says mission from Bob, second from Katie.
I will, we need, I must have brought it forward in May.
From the last.
Because I do need to, I have to put the vote on, I put the discussion on one month, and then the vote the next month. But thank you very much, and I apologize for that.
So is this going to be the same for all schools? Just curious.
Oh, it's a district policy.
District policy, okay.
It will be, I have to get approval from them.
We talked about it in June at Frontier, too, the same thing, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, summer building maintenance?
All right. So, you should have in front of you, a list that looks like this, it says, "summer maintenance 2017." And what I would like to do, with your indulgence, is to just read through the list, and I will annotate a little bit verbally as I go through the list. And if you have any questions, maybe hold them till the end, and you can take notes, and then ask me any questions you may have at the end. So, what I do each year when I give you this list is, I don't include all the regular maintenance, so to speak, you know. I'm including the things that we got done this summer that were maybe projects that we agreed on, or things that don't happen every summer. But, so my first line says, "to follow our repairs or updates conducted above and beyond routine summer maintenance." So, as some of you have already seen, and if you haven't, I strongly suggest you go down and look, because it looks great. We did three classrooms, where we pulled out all the carpet and installed tile. Now, getting back to some of the things we talked about with money, there was an approximate cost of about $4,500 per classroom. We ended up spending $14.5, because we chose to do the two biggest rooms, and the foyer between pre-K and K. Those are the biggest rooms in the building, and then we did second grade. So, again, these were approximations, so rather than $4,500 for three classrooms, which would have been $13.5, we ended up spending $14.5. And did, and did pre-K, K, the foyer in between, and then second grade.
Which is also the bathroom, right? The foyer is the bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, those bathroom areas, and it's the pre-K entrance, right? Also, in pre-K, there's a cabinet and counter replacement that's still in progress. All the carpets in the building this summer were cleaned by a commercial lender, rather than using our machine. What we discovered is that really our machine is more of a spot cleaner. So, at least for this summer, we brought in a commercial vendor to clean the carpets well, disinfect them. And as you know, we have a plan over the next few years to remove the carpets from the building, and replace them with tile, a little bit at a time. That's where a surplus will come in handy at the end of the year, Katie, if we can keep going in that direction. Another section of the kitchen was painted. Last summer, they did a portion of the kitchen, this summer they did a second section. There's still some walls in the very back of the cafeteria kitchen that need some paint. There's a control box, the industrial dishwasher in there, that was rusty, and, you know, getting to a point where it was dangerous, because, you know, obviously it's a control box with electrical material in it, and we didn't want that to continue to rust away, so we were able to repair that ourselves, refurbished it. All of the serving tables, when I say serving tables, I mean the big counters that they serve behind. Those obviously get cleaned every day, but they, you know, every now and then they need to be broken down and scrubbed. They're mostly stainless steel, some of them have hot water to keep food hot, and so they get scale on the inside that needed to get cleaned out. All of that got done, you know, top to bottom this summer. We painted the third grade classroom this summer, that's Jen's classroom. And the other rooms that got paint were the rooms that we did the tile in, all of those were painted as well. Not only did we do the asphalt shingle in the garage that you guys were aware of, but there was enough money to replace the garage door this summer. So now there is a power door, and the old door that was just, you know, really beat up and is gone. We also removed a tree over the garage. Part of the problem was that the tree was older, and, you know, we didn't obviously want it to fall on our new roof, but also, it shaded the garage roof so much that, that's why it was growing moss and getting, you know, all that on it. So, a tree was taken down. Again, this is all in-house, I'll point out to you when it's not. Here's an outside service, we had a little bit of trouble with our septic tank alarm, that came right at the end of the summer. So some of you who dropped off kids, probably saw this man in the white suit.
Oh, yeah.
Just as buses were arriving, being lowered down into our septic tank.
I was wondering what was going on.
Which made people wonder if we had a septic problem on our first day of school. We didn't really have a problem with the septic system. Septic system's working fine, I want to assure everybody, but the alarm, the alarm part of it was faulty, and that's been repaired. Because the alarm was going off, and we called our guy to come in, and he said, "there's no problem with your, with your system, it's the alarm that has a problem." So that was repaired. Also, our walk-in cooler, the refrigerator side, the floor was really rusted out, and becoming a problem. So we rehabbed that floor, you know, sanded out, scraped out all the rust, repainted the floor, did some work on the walls in there. And while we were in there, we also serviced, the cooling coil was cleaned up nicely as well. If you walk around the building, again, we're going on a 30, you know, this is almost a 30-year-old building in a couple of years, and a lot of the door jams and casings near the floor, especially the exterior doors, have developed rust from moisture, and so we're working on getting all of those that we can do painted, sanded and painted. But some of them are going to need to be replaced, because they've just got so much rust that they can't really be repaired entirely. But we did a lot of those this summer, and still working on those. And then door closers, just like the ones you see on top of those doors. Also, over time, these are original ones, and they've started to wear out, and doors weren't shutting appropriately, they weren't catching the latch. Those are important to fix, of course, for safety updates, because when a door shuts, you want it to shut all the way. We have had experiences where even during lockdown drill, a teacher shuts the door, turns the lock, only to find out that the door didn't really catch, because it just wasn't matching up. So we try to pay attention to those and get them done when we can. And then, again, some locks on various doors this summer were repaired or replaced. And everybody who comes to the pancake breakfast will be happy about the next item. Every time we did pancake breakfast, we blew fuses, you know, or breakers popped, you know. So now we have new circuits added, and that should no longer be a problem. And those circuits were added for both outlets in the kitchen area, and outlets out in the cafeteria area. So, we should be able to plug in all the coffee pots we want this year without system overload. Also, in the teachers' room, a new, I showed Bob a new, a new four-prong outlet that was installed, and things were redirected to different breakers as well, because we were also popping breakers when we had too many things running in the teachers' break room. And then, throughout the course of the summer, various repairs to different parts of the sprinkler system, which I'll get back to in just a minute. And then there's a few things that we didn't get to this summer, like our sandbox needs a little bit of repair work. In the winter months, when the file goes through the yard, and when we have a backhoe come in to remove snow that's fallen off the roof, we're learning. I mean, the roof is already eight years old, but each year we're learning that we have to be careful about certain things. So, if I have an excavator come to take the snow away, we have to clearly mark where everything is, so that we don't tear down our gardens, or break up a garden bed. And same thing with the town plow, I think the town plow must have hit the snow, must have pushed the snow over towards the sandbox, and broke one of the plastic things on it. So we want to repair that. Shed, we've been talking about for a long time, I think it needs to be removed and replaced, but we, again, this summer we had some of the other things we didn't get there. And the last one is a fun thing, kids want a gaga ball court, and PTO's been talking about doing that. And Andy's been, you know, roped into trying to help build one, but it just didn't happen again this summer, so those are still pending.
What is a gag at balls?
A game.
It's a round area that has, like, a fence or something about this high, and they have a ball, and they have to, I don't really know exactly...
It's like dodgeball in a closed area.
Yeah, they have to hit it, but, and you're out, if they get you from the legs down or something, you're not supposed to hit them above that, and, but they love it, my son loves it.
Yep.
Wow.
Played it at Cub Scouts.
Your girl has one in Conway.
It's a small court for a game, probably the whole thing is as big as our table here, but we're going to build one, kids, they learned about it at nature's classroom.
And a lot of the kids have been asking.
Hope I Google it, and I'll think you'll find.
Yeah, it's pretty popular.
Yes.
What about, we talked about getting a snow blower, is that on the list?
You know, I would have to ask where we stand with that. I don't know if it was purchased, or maybe it's already in the garage, I don't know, Katie.
Okay. Just my neighbor keeps telling me it's going to be a bad winter, because there's so much fruit everywhere, so I want to make sure that we're ready.
I can ask about that, we'll get back to you. What I do want to also add, though, to this tonight, is that over the past weekend, we've encountered an issue with the sprinkler system, where we had a leaky pipe. So, the good news is that we have a system now where an alarm tells us if our sprinkler system is losing pressure, we get an alarm that tells us about it, and then we can, you know, try to find out where, why we're losing pressure, and find out where the leak is. And we've had good success, as you know, in the past, of just finding that pipe, taking it out, replacing it, and we're good to go. Just about two weeks ago, around the 22nd of August, so maybe about three weeks ago, a worker removed a pipe, and we found that there was a lot of corrosion inside the pipe. So of course, that prompted us to be concerned about if there's corrosion elsewhere in the pipe system. I can tell you that last April, HFP, Hampshire Fire Protection, did an inspection of our whole system, and found no corrosion. So we passed that inspection, but then we found a pipe that had a fair amount of corrosion in it, so it alerted us to that fact. And because it's a safety concern, obviously, with our sprinkler system, this coming Thursday, we actually motivated, or activated our, you know, a lot of people very quickly, and this coming Thursday, we're going to meet here, the town administrator, Brian Domina, the president of HFP, who does all of our sprinkler work, is going to join us. I don't know the gentleman's name, I'm sorry, maybe you do, but.
HFP? William Rose, he's the president of HFP.
Bob Lesko, our plant director for the district, Dr. Carey, John Hannum, our fire chief, myself, and the building inspector who does our building, Mr. Seron, are all going to meet on Thursday and discuss the best way to remedy this problem. There are apparently remedies, including a chemical flush that shoots out, you know, that clears all the corrosion in the pipes. But I think in our particular case, we need to discuss the best approach, because we know that some of the pipes are pretty new, and some of them are very old. So, we're going to try to put, a bunch of, somebody's phone, we're going to put a bunch of heads together.
Mine's a quack, but I shut it off.
Mine's in my office.
I have a family member who passed away.
So, we're going to have, you know, all those folks around the same table, and discuss the best way to proceed. Because at the same time, we learned over the summer that we had to submit several of our sprinkler heads for inspection, and because they're over 10 years old, they didn't pass inspection, so we have to replace all of the sprinkler heads. So if you bring those three things together, right, we're already replacing all the sprinkler heads, we know that we have a system that's been faulty in the past, and now we found a pipe that had some significant corrosion inside it when we thought we had passed that test. So I think it's just a good time for everybody to talk about this, and decide how we're going to proceed, and what kind of money we're going to spend. And that's probably all I can give you right now, because, you know, the rest will be decided when we meet on Thursday about the best way to proceed. I mean, I think it could range from, is it time to overhaul the whole system, to, is there a flush that we can do annually to keep things going? Do we find all the pipes that haven't been replaced and replace those? You know, I don't know what the answer's going to be. But we'll keep you posted. And as you know, or as you heard, you know, everybody who needs to be a part of that, including from the chief, to the building inspector, to the people who do the work, plus school administration will be involved in that meeting. So I'm optimistic that we'll come up with a positive solution. And, you know, obviously, all those folks are aware of that concern.
So have the sprinklers been replaced, the ones that we talked about before that were supposed to be?
No.
Not yet. Not yet, so you're in the process of doing that?
Yeah. And at this point, I imagine we're not going to do anything until we decide what we're going to do.
Right, until we decide more holistically what to do.
Exactly, Katie. That's a good way to put it. And that's it for my summer updates, so if there's anything else I mentioned that you had questions about, I'd be glad to try to answer.
What time is the meeting on Thursday? Does it make sense for any of us to be there, or?
You're welcome, it's 10 o'clock, it's 10 o'clock here. And what we're going to do is, the outcome of the meeting will be a timeline for addressing the problem. A timeline, and looking at the most critical pieces first, so prioritizing what needs to happen with a timeline, so that we're all on the same page. But Pete did some detective work, and discovered that we were definitely well within our due diligence. We've had four quarterly in the last year, four times last year we were inspected. The last that we've made, the district had this...
You've been making changes along the way.
Right along, all of those recommendations have been done right along, and then we got pretty much a clean bill of health in April, with some things that needed to fix, be fixed, and then right up until August, we were right on track. And then, this pipe popped up that, they had already said there's no corrosion, and then they found one that did, so clearly, they're not going through every single pipe, but they're making an estimate, too, when they do the inspection. But we have all the heads together at the table on Thursday, and we'll come up with a timeline of reasonable action that will get us...
And the cost. My understanding is this could be a big number, right, at the end of the day, which is really the challenge.
Something we'll have to, we'll have to go back to the town, and bring it to the town...
Potentially.
Brian's going to be, Brian will be here, so he'll, we get to...
I think very likely.
Yeah.
Those things are just, nature of the beast, it's hugely expensive. I can speak to summer programs, which is to really tell you, we don't do a lot of summer programs here, except we did camp invention this year, or invention camp, and it was outstanding, just, you know, just terrific. I had no role in putting it together, or creating it.
Who did?
Our teachers from Sunderland, too, helped me here, because...
A fourth grade teacher.
Donna Carmody was one.
Donna Carmody, and...
Oh, Cee-Lah Antis.
And Cee-Lah Antis, yes, get a lot of credit.
A sixth grade teacher, I know...
Oh, yes, yes, gentlemen.
Yeah, what's his name? I know it, too.
That Rick Capper.
No, 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 the sixth grade teacher at Sunderland.
Ryan Copeland, Ryan Copeland?
I think it's, yes, Ryan Copeland.
Ryan Copeland might be right. So if we have the names right, those three people get the credit, but it was outstanding. You were here for some of it?
All three of my kids were here, and they loved it, they were so excited. I'd come, "come and see mommy, come see, I did this, and so-and-so did this, and..."
How many kids were there? A lot.
A lot.
There must have been 40? Was it a whole week?
It was a week, it was not the full day, but it was a good amount of the day, and they just loved it.
Was there a charge?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it was, it was very reasonable.
So how did that come about? Like, how did that program get put together? It has been a great, it was a big success.
The district has been partnering with the Hitchcock Center for about a year and a half, to develop, you know, a new focus on science, and the new science standards that are coming out. And this kind of, our elementary curriculum coordinator, with the help of some teachers, they just put it together, and they thought, well, we do reading, we do math, and, you know, but what about science? To really engage the kids in something that is off the beaten track, some, you know, so many children just love science. So they put a curriculum together, and they presented it, and we decided to run it and see how successful it would be. There was a great article in the newspaper, in the Greenfield Recorder, Andy came, and he really enjoyed spending time with the kids. And the crew, we had just a very, very engaging and comfortable group. I mean, when I came, I came several times, and the kids just really got right into the routine on the first day. They knew where to eat, they knew what to do, they all had, they had so many different kinds of projects. Each day was a different function of mechanics and physics, and then they had a culminating show at the end, where they videotaped their big project, and they went out to, like, the music room, where it's kind of empty, they used tables here, they were in the hall, where they were outside. That pit down there was just full, it was full of Legos.
Legos, and, there were, there were Matchbox tracks all over the room.
And marble tracks.
Marble tracks, tubes with marbles going through them, I mean...
Those little machines they made? Yeah, the, Rube, yeah, Rube Goldberg.
Yep, Rube Golds, Rube Goldberg inventions. And you might have overheard a conversation that sounded something like this, like, well, the car I made is too heavy, so I'm trying to figure out how to make it lighter, so it can do what I want it to do, and I decided that maybe instead of a pencil for the car axle, I could use a straw, and lighten the weight. I mean, beautiful, critical thinking conversations, it was awesome, awesome.
So will they do it again, or?
I sure hope so.
I sure hope so, too.
Even in like early release, or after school, or something?
Right. Sounds like a program that could...
It's, and the beauty is, now that they've got a curriculum, and they've got a routine, and they have the schedule made, it's, it could just get better every year, so.
Even if it's next summer, another camp, it's great.
Thank you for that, that, I was, we were all psyched about it.
Personnel update. So, you have the paper in front of you, we have three new professional staff here, on our roles, and one is a new special education teacher. And you remember at the end of last year, that we made some changes to our hiring, and rather than, rather than fill a couple of instructional assistant positions, we decided to put that money together and hire another special educator in the building. And that's Emily Seefel, she just got started with us at the beginning of the year, and that's going great. We needed a pre-K extended day coordinator. It's, all the other pre-Ks in the district have the same position, and that's the person who comes in a little later, and stays with the kids till 5:30, because our regular day staff is obviously here till 3:15. And so Caitlin is filling that role, and we did have one employee leave us, Jen Bechtold, our PE teacher for just one year, got a four-day-a-week job in her home community in Palmer.
Oh, wow.
And so obviously, needed to take that, take that job. So we lost Jen, and we were able to pick up an excellent young man named Stephen Kara, who also works at Shootsbury Elementary School, two and a half days, and he's with us two and a half days. So I'm optimistic that we'll be able to keep Stephen for a while, since he has close to full-time employment in between two districts, and hopefully that'll be, and that's working out nicely already.
Does the special ed teacher kind of replace Chrissy, the pre-K, because she's full-time in pre-K now?
Yeah, I mean, Chrissy, Chrissy will probably still expand her wings a little bit to some of the kids that, you know, maybe she's had in pre-K and wants to work with, but, but in a sense, yes. I mean, anything that Chrissy might have had above, say, pre-K or kindergarten, if she picked up any students. And Emily and Terry Anderson are pretty much splitting the building otherwise, you know, lower grades, upper grades, kind of thing. Terry's focused on the upper grades, Emily on the lower, and Chris will still do the IP's for kids in pre-K, and maybe one or two here or there. So, we have a nice team now that can collaborate, and really break down all of that work, and lighten their load a little bit, which translates into more time and attention for each student.
How is the pre-K going? Is there any update on that?
Yeah, so just today, we got two more, two more candidates. Wish Kim McCarthy, maybe we can have Kim come to a meeting at some point, her financial projections are excellent. And starting very soon, we have, yeah, two more kids, which will take us up to about 16 students. I think we started with 14. A lot of them are taking advantage of the extended day program. So, so far, so good, come see.
That's, that's going to work out.
That's great. Do we know how many are waitley, or how many are coming from other?
Not off the top of my head.
We don't know, okay.
Maybe next meeting.
But it's a mix, for sure.
Maybe Kim can, yeah. Will they be here in the summer, or no? I forget, is it a full year?
No, they don't do summer.
They only do the school year?
Yeah. Thank you. I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Except when we get to the principal's report, I can do that.
Okay. So, and Lynn, do you want to...
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, the yearly conference of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents have their annual joint meeting and conference at Hyannis, and this year it's going to be...
November 1st to the 4th?
Yes, Wednesday, November 1st to the 4th.
The dates.
I won't go till Thursday, but this is, if you're interested, fill out the form, recharne recharne it to the, to my office, to Donna Hathaway, my assistant, or to me, and we'll get you signed up. The, we, the district will pay for your expenses if you, if you'd like to go. One of the great things about it is the chance for the school committee members and me to collaborate to meet, to share ideas, to, to listen and, you know, just to get to know, to get, to know each other better. I can share my values, my understanding, my goals, my, you know, in a much more relaxed and meaningful way than we can do on TV in front of everyone. But I cannot, it, it, it's very nice. Last year was lovely, but again, it's in November, it's hard to get away and I know that you two have already gone to charting the course.
I'm signed, no, no, it wasn't charting the course, it was the summer.
It was like a summer condensed version, I think, of this conference? It was just a two-day conference that Massachusetts School Committee put on and kind of review, a review of topics?
It was like two hours on a Friday evening and then.
A morning on a Saturday, so it was good timing.
But I'm signed up for this one.
Oh, good.
Because they do have charting the course there too.
Right, that's what I really need.
I went there, I don't know how many years ago, five, six, seven years ago, I went down, I got a ten-year plaque and it was, you get to meet, not so much talk to the superintendent while you're there, but you're talking to other school committees.
Other school committees, yeah.
And how big they are and how small they are, like us and stuff and it's, it's pretty amazing and then the different things you could sign up for and just go to and it's, it's full.
The culminating activity is we, as a, as a district, we have dinner on, I think it's Friday night, not Thursday night, it's Friday night. We have a dinner just us and it's, it's very, it's just, it's really nice. It is. So, but there are probably five to six hundred people there, it is crowded and, but very, I learned a lot last year. The person with the behavior, her name was Jessica, the one that you taught, we talked about her.
A trainer?
Yes, she was a presenter last year and it was.
Anxiety?
Yes.
Jessica Mineham?
That's it, Jessica Mineham, fantastic, and I'm telling you, the room was packed. You couldn't even breathe, there had to be, everybody at the conference had to be in that room, but she engaged everyone on a personal level. She was a mile ahead, but you just, you were just taken in by her and she is phenomenal. So there are some great moments and, and she talked about what's going on in a child's head when they're experiencing anxiety. When we're looking at misbehavior, they're feeling different, you know, what are they, you know, what are they feeling? So, so that's very good. So I'm glad that you're going.
So is this form just to sign up for the conference or is this for something else?
No, if you've already signed up.
What is done?
When did you sign up?
Back when the email was first.
So you're all set. You're all set. Did you make a reservation for a hotel?
I haven't done that yet.
Okay. You probably need to do that. The best thing to do would be call my office tomorrow and talk to Donna because she's really in charge of all that and she'll tell you how to arrange for that.
I, I think I already can figure that out.
Sometimes when they get too full where, where it is, like the last time I went, I had to stay somewhere else which I was fine with and stuff, so.
Me too.
It wasn't that, it wasn't that far away and just drove to the conference apartment and stuff, so.
And there's a group that stay, I think, from, from here at the Holiday Inn or something.
I think Bob Decker was with me that time. You'll have fun with Bob.
He goes every year.
If you're.
So one thing that was striking at our conference though is the difference between the west, the western districts and the eastern and the challenges that people are facing. There's just like night and day, you know, they're trying to build schools, they don't have enough room, or like the opposite. So that was really interesting, I thought.
There's three different contingents in the state. There's rural schools, there's urban schools, and there's suburban schools. And we're, we happen to be part of the rural school. So our needs are different.
But what's the vote that's required?
You, we have to, we have to nominate, we have to nominate you to be our delegate at MASC, right? I think that's what we're supposed to do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What does that mean besides attending? Is there some other?
Is there some sort of voting?
There's voting going on at, yeah, there is some voting going, I can't, I think it's the last day there's voting for different, different things. There's always, there is every single year, so. When you come, next month, when you come to the joint meeting, I'll introduce you to Bob Decker.
Okay.
He knows, he knows everything and, I mean, not saying you don't know him, but he's been to a lot, he's voted a lot, but we have to nominate you or appoint you. I think the chair has to appoint you to be our, if you're going, you're our legal vote there from, from Whately's Elementary School or, yeah.
Okay. It's like their annual meeting.
They ask things like what kind of PD would you like to see? They, they offer menu, they, it's almost like a kind of a survey thing.
It's always at the end. So by then, I'm gonna say, including myself, one year, fifty percent of people are withdrawn. But they show you what the vote, they also publicize what they voted on in a booklet after, after the, after the conference and stuff, they'll, they'll show what they voted on and stuff.
Are they voting for some officers too? Because probably.
I don't think they vote, I think they're just talking.
Well, it doesn't matter. Are you willing to be our delegate?
Sure.
At that meeting?
Yeah, thank you.
And I think we could vote on it. I'm making a motion to have Maureen be our legal delegate at the MASC conference.
I'm gonna second that. All the paper?
Thank you.
So then the next, the other vote, I think, was taken. That was moved to our reorg discussion, so I don't really have any thing to report out. Is there anything else?
We have to do the food service.
Oh, food service.
Yeah.
Florrie's here. I'd like to introduce Florrie. Florrie, I don't know your last, I know it, but I don't, your last name.
Paige.
Paige. Florrie Page is our interim food service director and do you wanna come up and talk or would you like to talk from there or?
I can talk from here. I am part of a consulting group that goes in and works with school districts that need some support and a colleague of mine came in June, I don't, did they meet, did you meet Jim Holstead, my colleague? He came.
We, we heard about him.
He came in and wrote a report making recommendations and one of those recommendations was that you have some more hands-on support, so that's me, I'm here to offer the hands-on support. And I have been working with so far only Whately, Sunderland and Frontier, filling in for Deb as well as trying to take an overview of what's happening. And a very exciting thing has happened here, I don't know if you know, that we now have a point-of-sale system here, so.
Are the money that we spend?
Yeah. Is that up and running? Yes, it is up and running, yes.
And it's running smoothly?
It is. We found a few little glitches here and there, but yes, it's running very smoothly and it will give us some additional reporting. In fact, Peter and I talked this afternoon about some of the things it might be able to do for us that will, will help with collecting past due balances and keeping parents informed and.
That sounds great.
It does have the potential to track allergies and do pop-up screens if a child comes to the line who has a food allergy. The cafeteria worker will see a screen that tells them that the child has an allergy to do a double check on the tray. So there are lots of nice features that we're, we're still working on adding. We have the cash register piece working very nicely and I sent Peter a report of who had past due balances as of last Friday, so.
One of the things that we're hoping to do is to incorporate the directorship of food service from the, the regional and union office, the same way we do IT, special ed, facilities, superintendent's office, business manager, so that we'd have more consistency and efficiency, more consistency with the product, with the quality, with the, the purchasing, making the filing with the state, the claims, that they'll all be done out of one office and the accountability. We, right now, when Dussey comes to audit us, they, we have three different kind of people who are, you know, who are, so we meet and it's three different people that, and there's different things that we have to correct on each audit, whereas if we had one person doing it for the district, we'd be able to, it would just be more efficient and more effective.
Like you.
To do.
Right?
Right. So the, and it would be paid for by student population, the same way that the food ser, the food service director is paid for now, but it would be even probably less for, because we'd be at a more, you know, more.
So, so we're basically with you aboard, taking care of things, we're gonna try to have one menu for all five schools basically at the same time. That way we're buying in bulk, basically and.
Well, right now, you were talking about the consortium earlier in your meeting and that's a fantastic deal because they do the food service bid also for all of these districts and just one particular item stuck in my head that I was looking at that was gonna cost twenty-nine dollars and the bid price was twenty dollars. So we're seeing, yes, so we're seeing some great pricing through their food bid and they do it for the whole range of food service products. So that's a huge advantage. My approach will be to try to improve the overall quality of the food, to enhance the participation, to improve the performance of the workers. My colleague mentioned at some length the meals produced per man hour, so we've done some gentle cutbacks to see if we can do both things at the same time by reducing the amount of staff time a little bit and try to bring the food quality up considerably and hopefully bring the participation in line. And we'll be able to look at that using the point-of-sale system, we'll be able to track that information.
I know, I know in some schools, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take like Whately, we only have two people, correct? I mean, so to cut something somewhere, to do other way, I, I only ate here once late in the season last year in June and I went through the line and the two ladies were very nice. I thought the food, Pete and I had lunch together that day, I thought the food was very good, I thought it was fresh, you know, it's just, I haven't eaten a school lunch in a long time, so. But I thought it was very nice for two people to run a cafeteria like this. I'm not sure what happens when you get to a larger one like Frontier or Deerfield where the number of people increase. I mean, I would imagine there's downtime and if there's downtime, that's where we're losing probably the money on the downtime.
There is not downtime. There is not. They are really hustling from the moment they walk in the door until the last piece of equipment is cleaned and put away. And we do have the two ladies working. The point-of-sale system requires a dedicated person to be at that computer, running the transactions as the students come through for their meal. That person also is the last pair of eyes on reimbursable meals, so they can't just be, you know, punching keys, they also have to be able to evaluate whether or not all of the requirements have been met by the meal. But the ladies are very busy. There is, I have not seen downtime at any of the programs that I've looked at, they really are busy all the time.
So one of the things that I believe that we're going to ask at the joint committee in October is if the district can move into that direction, one district person to be in charge of all the lunch programs. And at that point, we, if, if it gets voted in at the joint committee, then what we need to do is look for the right person for the job. Florrie is an intern, she's a consultant, she's only staying to the point where we're able to make the remedies that we saw to help us figure out where, where we can tighten up so that the losses, the seventy thousand dollars at Frontier, the seven thousand dollars here, you know, the money that we're losing, that we can kind of close that gap so we're not losing as much money. In some districts, I spoke with the assistant superintendent on Friday of Springfield and they were losing a million dollars and they had the same consultant and now they're making a million dollars and I, I don't, you know, it can be done, but it's, we need to start slow to go fast. So this is something that we're going to bring forward to you as a, as a full joint committee.
Do you think all the, all the schools are gonna be in favor of it?
It's possible, but you know.
It happens if one doesn't, if we're talking about how the breakdown for paying for that individual, if, if one town decides not to do it, does that mean Frontier and three of the other towns will?
Yeah.
Okay. Split the cost?
Yeah.
Are you gonna present us with the financial analysis of sort of what the plan is?
We did, we did send you the, the recommendations, we sent you the audit and the recommendations that were found and then we told you what we were planning to do, what the plan is and Florrie is fulfilling that plan. And as we move forward, you know, we adjust it this way or that way and trying to tweak it so that it's, it's solid. And then the idea is to get, to hire someone that can run with the program. Yeah. But to get someone new and then try to remedy the program all at once is, you know, we need someone in there and Florrie, lovely as she looks, rolls up those sleeves every day, you know, sweating and is, is out there doing it too with everyone.
Will she be part of the hiring process because she has experience with what we're trying? That's what I figured.
And the training process?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I have basically found that there is no, there's no, nothing for direction at all. So when we're ready to implement the new person, they'll have marching orders, you do this on Monday and you do this once a month and here's how you do this and here's where you go to find this answer. So they'll have some SOPs in place by the time I'm, I'm finished.
So Whately would contribute sort of the proportion that we contribute to other things to this effort, to the extent everybody were to participate? And if they don't, then we contribute a sort of bigger proportion?
Well, the same as you have then, depending on what the salary of the new person will be. But we have cut back, you know, it's not a year-round position anymore, it's, it's more or less a week or two before and after, after the school year and before the school year. So that would be something that would come up, but it, it wouldn't be dramatically different than what you were paying. But what we're looking for now is efficiency and effectiveness, quality purchasing, consistency and a way, it's not, it's not a problem in Whately as much as it is in the other school, but there's some, there's some outstanding balances that we just need to, to collect.
How do you, how do you?
I was just wondering, is the expectation that we would break even eventually or is, like what should we be?
That's certainly a goal.
That's the goal?
That's a goal. It is tough, as you point out, when you have two people, you need to have two people. And you probably could do it with many more meals with two people. And even many, doing fewer meals, you would still need the two people, so there's, there definitely is an economy of scale.
I mean, the day Pete and I were, we had lunch together, you know, we talked to a couple of the kids, you know, and, you know, there's a few things that they really like. I mean, I'm a mac and cheese, I'm a mac and cheese fan from way back. I go to a restaurant, I order, I try everybody's mac and cheese once, whether it's buffalo chicken on it or whatever's on it, or bacon or whatever.
Lobster.
But these kids, but these kids like, I mean, like certain things and if it's, if it's feasible to give them what they like, I think we could sell more meals and I know we've done studies and all that stuff, but, you know, the kids, the kids will tell you what they would like to eat. I mean, as long as it's somewhat healthy, I'm gonna say somewhat healthy because, you know, we're not gonna eat granola every single day, even though I eat granola, but it's, or yogurt, but it's, okay, I'll just be quiet.
Don't be quiet, this is, it's all very helpful.
But you know, the kids, I mean, that little time we had here, tiny time.
They'll tell you.
They'd tell you.
They love it.
I mean, they had homemade soup that day, I'm pretty sure that was homemade soup. That soup was, that soup was delicious.
Yes.
You know, even though it was in June, it was a rainy day, but it was good on that rainy day that day when I was here. I mean, it was.
I told Florrie that we tried our hand at a, at a survey last year, of course, you know, we, meaning me and I don't, I'm not a food service guy, but we did get good feedback from parents and we did a scatter chart with kids too. Remember I put it up on the wall here?
Oh, yes.
If you'd like to see it.
I would like to see it.
We, we did it on, based on a different menu, but I, I think our menu has gotten a lot healthier, you know.
And the requirements are to serve healthier food to the children and my, my favorite phrase is the no thank you taste. My children always had to have a no thank you taste. You can't say no thank you until you have had a taste. So to have them try some new foods, but still have the old standby there so we don't send anyone away hungry. Obviously, everyone needs to be fed.
Is there, is there a lot of, is there a lot of government food out there that, that we don't take advantage of or not affect, not for us? I mean, is there anything else that the government, you know?
They, they offer us a list every month that we can choose from and the list for September's order is out right now. In fact, Kathy and I talked about it today and we'll go through and choose the items on that list that we think are gonna be popular. We're not gonna take things because they're free, we're gonna take things because we think the kids will eat them and then incorporate them into the October menu.
That's good.
And also trying to be seasonal, as you said, the cold rainy day in June is the anomaly, so we're gonna have increasingly rib-sticking warm meals as the weather begins to cool off where we didn't have, we didn't have mac and cheese in September. But we probably will have it, but we probably will have it in October.
I'll come, I'll come on a Tuesday when you have it. I'll let you know.
We're making meatloaf with, we're making meatloaf with the government ground beef on the nineteenth, so that might be a day you wanna come for lunch.
Okay, if we lived up in the sticks of Maine, they'd be offering venison hamburger up there in the schools, you know, it's.
Okay, well, that sounds great. And it all sounds good, I guess the only thing I'm wary of is the October meeting, voting on it without too much information. I think people would probably want to see more information on what the costs will be and what the goal of the whole sort of endeavor will be in terms of the loss. Did we end up with a seven thousand dollar loss this year? Is that where, do we know? Do you don't know?
I'm not the best person to ask, I'm not sure.
I mean, that's what was.
Jim included that in his report.
He did, yeah.
And a fair amount of it is the uncollected debt because you have to cover that. It can't be a loss for the lunch program. It has to come from the general fund. You have to make the lunch program whole at the end of the year. So the money that is not collected is coming out of everyone else's pocket and it's not good, it's not good use of the money. And we are aggressively pursuing the application process. So if someone is having a problem, they can fill out an application at any point during the year. And the, the new direct certification is a wonderful thing where children are certified through their federal program participation. And hopefully that's going to continue to expand and take over the application process so that as people apply for those programs, they'll be certified and we won't have to do that ourselves.
Also with the new, the new system, they can pay by credit card, right?
We're almost there and we're, we're getting ready and as Dr.
And online.
Yeah, as Dr. Carey said, we're taking slow, small steps to start with and we are poised to step into that arena and there's lots of interest in it.
That's, I mean, I think that'll be a big help for a parent to go online. Okay, here's my debit card. Here's a month, here's a month worth of.
Right now, the problem, the thing that's inhibiting that right now is that the companies or the things we go through will charge one or two percent fee of the parents. Uh, well, we use a credit card in, in a store. The, the company, the store pays those fees to use that card. So they actually lose money on each.
It costs them more, right? So, but schools are not allowed to charge, are not allowed to pay credit cards?
The company we would go through will charge, we'd like to do it for athletics. We'd like to do it for a variety of things. And the, so far, what we've looked at is a one or a two percent.
The meal charge would be a dollar ninety-five per transaction. So if you went in and bought lunch for tomorrow, it would cost you a dollar ninety-five to pay two eighty-five. But if you went in and bought lunches for the month, the dollar ninety-five seems like a lot more reasonable charge. And if you did it for, say, two or three months at a time, and you would be able to go in and look and see what the child's balance was and even what they, what they ate, you can go in and see how they spent the money as well. The portal piece will probably be available much sooner. The other issue with the credit card piece is that you have five different banking systems. And that is very challenging as you're starting to look at implementing the, the credit card system.
Whatever's cheaper.
No, you, you guys are five different systems. So as we're trying to put one piece together.
Five different banking? Five different towns, five different systems.
And that was, that was the challenge to getting all the small schools up and running on the point-of-sale system. It's as if you were a huge school all by yourself. The same, same thing is necessary to enroll your hundred and, what is it? Hundred and forty-something children as it would be if you had a thousand children. So the individuality that Dr. Carey is alluding to moving away from is definitely causing complications for you.
And I would argue that credit cards are not necessarily what we want to focus on. You might focus on electronic form transfer, which is much more cost-effective. So you don't have to pay all those fees on top of it. But it allows people to do it online.
Well, we also need to have a company that will partner with the system software that we're using for the point-of-sale. And they're brand-specific, so they, they partner with specific companies. Although I think that all of that is becoming much more generic.
Yeah.
So maybe the wait time that we're impatiently tolerating is worth it in the long run.
Well, and I think knowing the balances will go along and getting people to just stay with their.
And to, to see what the child is buying to make sure.
Not that the school doesn't tell us, but you can look it up yourselves.
To be able to get on your computer and look and see.
But we want, don't want the kid to go hungry either. I mean, that's one thing that we're not.
Well, I don't think they ever don't feed them.
I know. I'm just saying, I mean, it's.
And there's certainly a lot of that shaming right now that we don't want to be getting into at all.
We don't have that, we don't have that going on at all because it's not about the child. It's about the parent.
Right.
And you can aggressively pursue the parents.
Right. Great, well, that sounds good. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thanks for staying and listening.
Yeah, listening to our man.
It's not my, it's not my first.
You're free to go, but thank you so much.
I think I will take you up on your offer. I was in for seventh morning and spent lots of time.
We'll see you tomorrow night. I'll see you tomorrow night. I'll be at that meeting.
You will indeed. It was nice to meet you. And clearly, don't be shy. If you have any questions, Pete has my contact information. And if something crosses your mind at two AM, you can write it down and contact me via email. And I do have district email.
Florrie has a FRSU thirty-eight email.
Oh, okay.
Well, good.
Great.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're done with new business, I think, then?
In our vote, we've already got our policy review subcommittee person.
Yep.
Thank you. So we are coming up with a new policy incidentally for food service and collecting the debt.
Oh, so that's good.
Because we need to have a possibility to open that.
Okay. So I don't have any report, being a new chairman and chairperson. Um, the collaborative, I did, don't believe there was any, there were any meetings this summer. So the next meeting is coming up, but I'll connect with Maureen, let you know what's going on there. So will Donna sign Maureen up? Because I remember when I joined the collaborative, that someone needs to let them know that she's going to be the new.
I will let Donna know.
Donna could let them know and then that will help the process get started.
Thank you, yeah. Because they will, if somebody doesn't show up at least once a year, they'll start saying, you do not have a delegate from your school system. And we got, you do get one of those costs, so.
And they get orientate, they'll give you an orientation. So principal?
Okay, good.
Can you go to your report?
In the interest of time, I will indulge you and let me just walk through the report. And then if you have questions at the end, I'll try to be brief because I'm a little longer than we usually are here. So, um, the first item is a super important life item and unfortunately also a sad item. We, our community experienced the loss of one of our parents recently. Two years ago, we had a parent pass away as well. And of course, in our, in our faculty and the staff who work here, we all deal with death and dying at one time or another in our lives. And this most recent, um, uh, death of a parent has, has created a situation where we feel it would be helpful for the entire community, not just in Waitley, but beyond, um, our district, uh, to offer a forum on death and dying. And so the good people at, um, the Garden, a center for grieving children and teens, have offered to do a panel forum for us. And you have the flyer in front of you. It's coming right up. We started promoting it today. Um, all of the other four schools, the three elementary schools in Frontier, said that they would like to promote it to their parents as well. So it will happen here and depending on our SVP, I'm sure we'll need at least the cafeteria, maybe bigger space. But, um, they're going to come and do that forum for us and you can see who the members of the panel will be. Their format is that each member of the panel, and some of them I'm sure you know, Jonathan Schwab, pediatrician, I think there's a, I'm not sure. That's how you spell the name Jonathan, but.
Depends, some people do.
Maybe, maybe he does, but that looks like a typo to me. The director of the, of the center, the Garden Center, will be one of the panelists, Dr. Schwab. Paul Rowd, who's also connected with the Hatfield District, and then our own Cindy Birch. Um, I think she's trying to get someone from Community and Service Options to be on the panel too. So this may get updated later. Uh, so that's going out now and I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, the second item on my principal's report is that we are continuing with our 4H initiative. And this one also has a date coming up very soon, October fourth. And we haven't started promoting that yet. I hope that by the middle of this week, I'll have materials going out across the Waitley community. And we're going to invite widely and we're going to really try to invite, um, the folks who already are involved in agriculture and farming in our community to a visioning session. And what we're hoping to get out of it is, again, we've talked a lot tonight about small steps. We have a garden program already that is a natural fit. Uh, we'd like to start a club that needs all of these things. If we're going to do 4H, we need adult leaders. So that's really what, what we're doing is we're, we're out there fishing for adult leaders who can run some of these 4H clubs. These days, 4H does everything from, uh, you know, husbandry, animal husbandry, showing animals, um, robotics, sewing clubs, gardening clubs, there is a photography clubs. There is a wide variety of things that can do, that can be 4H. Um, and I brought you some brochures as well. Thank you. Anyway, that's just their most recent. And so Tom Moskevich from UMass Extension and 4H is my partner in this endeavor here. And we, um, we're hoping to have a visioning session on October fourth and you should see more promo about that coming this week. And we want to start by clearly connecting our garden to a larger initiative where we have evenings, weekends and summertime, a club that can maintain our gardens, which we don't have now. We already have a sewing initiative here at our school that Lois has been doing for years and a whole lot of sewing machines, so we hope to establish that. And then beyond that, I'm not sure what the clubs will be. It's going to be determined in part by who the leaders who step up are and what the kids are interested in doing next. But I wanted you to know that that ball is still rolling. Um, as we always do, we have school council meetings coming up. Our first one is on the twentieth at five thirty. Maureen has been a part of our school council, so, um, she's choosing to focus on school committee. So we'll be replacing you on the school council. We have one other member on the school council that's not going to continue. Uh, their term is over. So, um, I'll be seeing PTO later this week and start the process of nominations and an election if necessary. Um, there's only an election if we have more candidates than we need to fill the two spots. If we don't, then whoever steps up to the plate will be welcomed onto the school council. And as always, the school council will focus on the school improvement plan, but also I'd like them to have a really active role in the 4H initiative as well. And I didn't include something called Safe Routes to School. Is anybody familiar with that? It's the Department of Transportation Initiative. Sundaland Elementary's been involved with them for a long time. Um, and I wanted to just tell you very briefly about that because I forgot to include it. Uh, we have a representative from Safe Routes coming to do a few assemblies for us in a couple of weeks. It's about safety for kids who walk and/or bike to school. But above and beyond, teaching them the safetiness, you know, about safety when you're walking to school. There's also possibilities for grant money. So in some communities, they've spent a ton of money to, for example, redo the front of a school where they had trans, uh, traffic problems that pick up and drop off. They might even, you know, could do grant money to pave a road or install sidewalks where there aren't any. Those are big projects. I'm not sure that we'll get to that in any hurry. But we're going to start by just talking to the kids about safety issues around safe routes to school. And, um, and again, just wanted you to know that that was coming.
How many, how many kids, like, ride your bike right now?
We don't get a lot of walkers or bike riders, but when the weather's good, there might be ten, twelve, fifteen bikes out there on any given day.
Oh, really? Wow, that's.
It's become more popular over the years, it seems like.
And I think if we talk about it more, and it's good for exercise and if we teach kids how to be safe out there and make sure they have helmets. Uh, we don't have a lot of sidewalks in Waitley too, which is, you know, an issue.
I was at Sunderland last weekend and they have this nice path that comes right from their town to the school, like through the fields. And I was sort of wondering if there was any way Waitley could have some sort of path.
So Katie, I, oh, through the fields would be good.
Through the fields, so they don't have to go on the busy roads because that road is.
I think five and ten is the, is the problem.
Well, five and ten is the problem, but just even like, there's a lot of fields.
That's a creative idea. I like that. I can tell you that when this one came to visit me.
Farm roads, I believe.
We talked, we talked for about ten minutes and I said, let's go outside. Because I want to show you our property, you know, and I, I, I could, I could see us at the very least having, um, uh, something paved along the fence all the way to the street so that when kids turn, uh, students who ride to school, the busiest part of their ride is when they turn into our driveway because that's where a lot of people are. So it would be nice if there was like a bike path, asphalt path along the fence so they could stay away from traffic when they're on campus. I mean, when they're out in the community, there are still safety issues, but something like that would be helpful. I've often thought about whether our fire road could become the bus drop-off if the bus went right by our front entrance and dropped off at the back. Covered, kids get right off the bus, right into the building, you know, get rained on, which is a little benefit. And then go out this way so that they're not, you know, that they're not, cars don't have to wait for the buses to move. Or parents who pass the bus with the flashing red lights on, you know. All of those things. So that's bigger, bigger picture stuff, but in the meantime, I'm glad that we've established a relationship. And I got to tell you, when, um, after we did that, I got, um, at least two people from Sundaland Elementary School who called me and said, I'm so glad to hear you're doing the Safe Routes thing. They're great, they've been great for our school. The principal and Matt Howell both, both called me and said, work with this person. She's been great for us, so.
Yeah, it'd be great.
But that's a very creative idea about.
Just to cut off part of the route.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be going to private property?
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe they'd be willing.
They still got, they still got, they still got to come over to the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
They got to come over rail tracks and go from there.
Depending on where they're coming from, right, yeah.
Maybe go through Don's backyard or something like that.
But I think that's a creative idea, so keep that in mind. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is there anything in the enrollment? Is this your report?
Only that, uh, we've got two more pre-K kids coming this week that are not included there. But otherwise, that's accurate as of today. And two more, two more that just enrolled today. So we're up to almost one forty, what does it say? One thirty-six, something like that. So it'll be one thirty-eight by the end of the week. Good.
Okay, so superintendent, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Um, our annual, uh, Frontier Regional and Union Thirty-Eight Staff Welcome Breakfast and twenty-year service ceremony on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth was excellent. And, um, I think most people were pleased and, um, we were excited about our special breakfast because we were able to provide a hot breakfast, so that was exciting.
Was that, how did that come about? Because I did hear a lot of positive reviews of the breakfast.
Oh, I'm glad. I, um, somewhere, um, from my years of experience in other districts, we, uh, when you're talking staff, you treat them well. They're the ones doing the heavy lifting. And I just felt, um, I asked Florrie if there was something we could do, um, if they could cater the, the breakfast. And actually, the Frontier Regional, um, people who do the, um, the kitchen actually work the breakfast.
They did.
So we did, um, we did, I did something for them. And also too, the custodians who worked hard all summer, where I have invited them to a lunch being catered by our food service, which means I'll pay them to feed, to have all the custodians come on August twenty-fifth at one thirty to, um, just have an appreciation lunch and hear all the hard work they did. They really worked hard this summer, everywhere, every, and it was a fast summer. And I'd also like to mention Lois Lively, who, um, donated through community service or whatever. She made, um, shades or cloth, um, hangings for the, for each door in the building for safety purposes when you have lockdown, the windows and the door. You can't, it's, it's a law that they can't be covered up during the normal, during a normal day because kids can go, so kids come and go. And if you open the door when someone's, you know, pulling and pushing, yeah. So, but when there's a lockdown, you have to cover those windows. And she took old scraps of material, what I understand, and she made a covering for every door in the building. So I'd like to point that out, that Lois did this, um, and, and she's just a treasure, so.
Can we so add that while the Frontier staff did the cooking that morning, that Florrie, who was just here, she had on her cooking gear. She put her bandana on and her work clothes and she was in there showing solidarity and worked with the staff and served us all, which I thought was excellent. You know, that's a morale boost, like, you know. If you're asked to work on a morning where everyone else is enjoying, at least the person who asks you to work is working right in, side by side, which I thought was really.
And, um, and I, I, um, I have recognized, I will recognize that. And they're a great team, but they're a great team here too. We're just, everyone's just lovely and the, the food service, they work very, very hard. Our custodians work very hard too. And our IAs, entertaining, everybody works, central office. Anyway, so the administrative team and I, this isn't on your notes, but I forgot to put it on and I didn't want to reprint, but the administrative team and I met last week to discuss the possibility of piloting a Blizzard Bag program in our district for this school year. And, uh, after reviewing documents and information from other districts who engaged in the program last year, our team decided that we would like to take this school year to do more research and to develop a quality protocol that would meet the specific needs of our students. So we're still looking at the, uh, when you said it was going to be a tough winter. Fortunately, this year, our last day of school, I think, is somewhere around the twelfth. So it's not as late as last year was because we were able to start earlier. So last year, we had six days. Hopefully, we won't have that many this year, but, um, so we're still kind of in that, uh, research pattern with the Blizzard Bags. As more and more schools go toward that, uh, we will see what, you know, how, how the accountability is is and, you know, understanding that we can't replace a teacher in a classroom. However, we're missing days of learning before MCAS. Is there something we could do to provide practice at home? But then parents are busy and they don't want to, you know, it's hard, it's a, you know, it's, it's kind of an imposition on them to say, well, now, you know, a busy day, the kids, whatever, and now you need to help your kids. So, and what we did was Gateway District actually had piloted last year and they piloted with the state under the understanding that they would get feedback from all the, you know, stakeholders and then present it and really shift through their data. And so there were lots of pros from teachers and parents and then there were some cons from teachers and parents and they're all very valid points. So at this point, we decided we're not going to go there yet. We're just not going to go there yet, so.
And the idea is.
For this year, sorry.
You're not going in this year yet?
Not this year. We'll look again next year and see how many other districts pick it up. It is, you know, it's starting in the northern states, it's coming down, but more and more in Massachusetts are doing it, especially as the winters become more severe. The weather's getting more severe everywhere and.
I wonder what some of the cons are.
Just what I said, parents are working.
Yeah, if you're a busy parent, you don't want to have to.
Sometimes students, depending on, and the needy students probably don't get as much help at home because there's so many other distractions with other kids and this and that, plus the question of special education, how do we ensure that their accommodations and modifications are being met at home? Other schools have navigated that and have come up with answers, you know, for that and have come up with different plans and I, we went through the data and I handed the data out to the administrative team, but we just don't feel ready right now to embark on that.
And what about if a, if a kid did not do the work in?
Well, they have five days to complete the work and if not, they get an absence for the day. So, but the idea is to keep their skills going even when there's, you know, five or six learning loss days before MCAS. We keep the skills, you know, if we ask them to write or we ask them to go on a computer program and, and practice their math facts or we ask them to look at a calendar and figure out whatever. But we're, we're keeping an eye on it and we'll see where it ends up. You know, it's definitely a change and sometimes it's better to let other people engage in that and, and cross the river before, you know, and then build a bridge.
Let them simplify it.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, I think having expectations from the teachers for snow days is a good thing. The kids would probably listen to the teachers more than they'll listen to the parents.
Right, well, and, and, and in most schools, the teachers are available through email for two or three hours in the morning, you know, if there's any questions, they're available for two or three hours. And they have to process the work that's done, so it's not like they're getting a free day. That's a paid day for the teachers because they are processing that work.
They have to put it together and then they have to.
Yes, they have to put it together, they have to, you know, assess it, they also have to, you know, answer any emails that would come from parents. It's, we decided it's much easier in the high school because they're independent learners and they have one-to-one computing. They get the computers and we give them the computers and the expectations are there.
They have no excuse, right.
They have longer-term assignments, but other schools are navigating it and we can learn from their example, so.
So I, to me, it's a little reminiscent of the early release program where the communication's out there before people really know what it is.
Right.
And so I would encourage you to include parents early in the conversation.
Oh, definitely. We, that was, this, the first step was how much did we want to invest as an administrator to do, we think it was best for our students and their needs. And we at this point aren't ready, but the second step, of course, would be, because I am going to be sending out a survey to all the parents at the end of September, beginning of October anyway, and I was going to add Blizzard Bag questions, but I think that after looking at all the research and all the data that we have available to us and deciding to wait is, so I'm not going to add those kind of questions.
You're not going to even ask the question.
No, because, but that information would be out there. We would actually make sure that they understood.
Is Gateway the closest?
Orange, Mahar does it and Gateway and I'd have to, I'd have to get a list, but there are, more and more schools are doing it.
And the idea is that you have to have five snow days first and then you start the Blizzard Bags?
You could figure it out. I wanted three.
Or you decide.
I said three because that would end us, that would stop us from going into a whole new week, the week of the 16th, but you could.
So you'd pick whatever number you think is the right.
But we have, you know, we have five anyway that we have in our calendar, so, and if things are going to go well, we won't need them all. But if this week is any indication.
It's a little cold.
They miss some school down there.
I think for a while.
That too. You could call it an emergency bag.
So.
They'll get a waiver from the state.
They'll have to do something, they will.
That's extreme conditions.
So that's where we are with the Blizzard Bags and again, it's, it's just like any topic. There's, you know, many people are for it, many people are hesitant because it's something different and it's something we're not used to and is it educationally sound? Well, not for every day, absolutely not, snow day, but we'll, we'll work on it. So I also attended the Whately Town Meeting on August 9th and that was great. They're a very good group there and very nice to, to talk with. And I was invited to attend the September 19th meeting of the Town of, Town of Whately's Finance Committee, but I have the Sunderland School Committee that same night. So I will attend the Finance Committee meeting as soon as I'm done with the meeting in Sunderland. So hopefully.
Probably not.
I think Whately might go fast, but I really want, I really want.
You know Sunderland's not going to go fast.
Well, no, it's the Sunderland School Committee, it's not the Sunderland Town of Sunderland, it's the school committee.
Okay.
But anyway, long, but having said that, ma'am.
Some of us are going to be there.
I hope that you're going to be there so that you can, you can inform me because they asked for the school committee members. They didn't actually ask, I was, I, I would, I would definitely be there. Unfortunately, it does land on a night where I have, you know, I have five, five.
We'll take care, we'll take care of the four.
We'll cover it.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be more visible in the buildings in my second year as superintendent. Pete and I've made plans for me to meet and visit the school building, visit classrooms every two weeks. My long-term goal will be each week next year, but as I, I get a little more adept at, at my job and, and knowing all the players and all the, the cycle of things, I'd like to spend more time with the kids and the teachers and where all the fun is. And having said that, a superintendent's first year is always to go slow, learn the lay of the land, understand the values and traditions of the district and to make a vision and strategic plan for moving the district forward. I have taken this seriously and I'm excited to present our vision and our strategic plan for the next two years that the administrative team has worked out for months with me. I'm going to present that at the October Joint School Committee meeting on October 5th at 6:00 at Frontier Regional School. So we have three main goals, three main strategic plans and it's curriculum, assessment and special ed. So we're really excited about that and the team has helped me develop that. That's mine.
Make a motion and adjourn if she's not done unless she has any comments.
I have nothing else. Money, money, money.
You got enough notes there to make? Your first night?
My second.
My second.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you, 7:45.